Twenty-four is now called to order. This is December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. It is five thirty P.M. And we are in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You're welcome. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Wilson, here.
Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
McCambe?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
Okay. First on the agenda tonight, we have a ten-year award for thirty years of service. If you don't know how long that is, it's a mighty long time. And I'm sure Arthur will be able to tell you that. This is a certificate of recognition and grateful recognition of thirty years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington. As of December twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, we hereby present Arthur Roberts with the certificate of recognition. Shane A. McCambe, Mayor, Mr. Roberts, come on down. If you guys don't know who this guy is, quick point, everybody knows who this guy is. You'll always see him on the plays, man.
What's up, big dog?
How you doing?
Good.
Thirty years, man, that's a long time.
Really?
We appreciate you. Can I get a picture taken with you so I can bat like that over there? Would you like to have a word, please?
Hello?
Have you stand right there so they can get your, uh...
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thirty years of service.
Yes, thirty years is a long time.
Big go.
Uh, back when my father was in the workforce. You can't hear me?
You're supposed to be in...
I thought I was supposed to be...
That's okay.
I was just gonna let you roll with it.
Hey, thirty years, you can do what you want. You do it.
There you go.
Well, you know, when my father was in the workforce, thirty years was normal. Nowadays, not so much. People skip around. I mean, two, three years here, two, three years there. Big difference. Um, I really enjoy working for the city. I love it. It's hard. It's a lot of hard work. That's what makes it great. It's like, you know, if it wasn't hard, everybody did. And I'd like to give special thanks to Chris Clements. I mean, he has assembled a workforce. Like, look at this last snowstorm.
Right.
I mean, we got brand-new guys. They only plowed like one year, two years. They did a fantastic job. I just want to put out my special thanks
Right on.
to everybody in our department.
Right on.
You know, not me, it's our department. They do a fantastic job. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thirty years. Right on. Thirty years. Thank you, sir, for your service. We certainly appreciate you. He's one of our good workers, and we've got plenty, but he's definitely one of them. Uh, next tonight, we have a mayor's award. And tonight, we're doing something a little bit special because this recipient is, uh, special. So, uh, we want to recognize, uh, Major Grimshaw. And we're gonna recognize you two different ways. First off, we wanna... Could you come up to the podium, please? First off, uh, there's a few of us that picked up a little something special for you, a little card. And, uh, we'd like to recognize you that way as well. Mine's in the mail. Uh, I, on your card, I've got, uh, wrote "Super Cop" down. That's kind of the, the writing joke in Burlington. Everybody calls him "Super Cop" because, uh, he's a super cop. And you've done so much, there's been so many events, and I call them gigs, but there's been so many events that I go to. And I can't think of one where there's supposed to be police representation and you weren't there. I think, uh, the only time you miss them is if you're on vacation or, uh, half-dead. And I don't think he's ever been half-dead, so he's always there. Um, what a blessing. The whole Grimshaw family has been to the city of Burlington. Um, we're gonna recognize you tonight, not bro. So first off, let me recognize you with this mayor's award, my friend. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, I, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your selflessness and commitment to your job, family, and community over the years is extraordinary. And that is why you are Burlington's Super Cop. People like you help make Burlington... I'm sorry. People like you help make anywhere, but most importantly Burlington, a great place to live, work, and play. On December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, this mayor's award is presented to Darren Grimshaw. But before I give you that, I'm gonna have you read, I'm gonna have you read that, but let me read this first to get the setup.
Okay. Yes.
I'm gonna build it to a crescendo, my friends, and then she's gonna put the capper on it. Darren J. Grimshaw. Major Darren Grimshaw began his career with the Burlington Police Department in nineteen eighty-eight. As a police officer, Grimshaw worked in the patrol division and served as a detective before being promoted to lieutenant. As a lieutenant, Grimshaw served in many capacities, including commander of patrol, criminal investigations on the Southeast Iowa Narcotics Task Force. Additionally, Grimshaw managed the nine-one-one communication center for Des Moines County and has been the department's liaison officer to the Crime Stoppers Board of Directors, the Neighborhood Watch Initiative, Reserved Officer Program, Police Explorers, and the Citizens Police Academy. Grimshaw also served as the, the department's firearms instructor for fourteen years. Grimshaw was promoted to major, major, oh, I'm gonna get it out. Grimshaw was promoted to major of administration services in two thousand and twelve, where he supervised the department's schools resource officers, animal control, public relations, college internship program, Stu's doing it all. Intern program and the department's career development recruitment activities. In two thousand and eighteen, Major Grimshaw took over as operations commander, where he now supervises all patrol and investigative divisions. Over the years, Major Grimshaw has participated in many local programs and is still actively involved with the Burlington Noon Lions Club, is a member of the Burlington Chapter of the NAACP, where he was the two thousand and eighteen recipient of the NAACP Citizens Award. I was there. Major Grimshaw is also active with the Iowa After School Alliance, the Local Pieces After School Program... This guy's everywhere. Special Olympics and the Bridges Out of Poverty Stay Ahead Program. Major Grimshaw understands the importance of local youth engagement and works hard to foster trust and to develop lines of communication with our youth and minority commun- communities. Programs such as the Youth Police Academy and Minority Recruitment Committees remain priorities. Major Grimshaw graduated from Burlington High School in nineteen eighty-three and went on to earn a degree in criminal justice from Southeastern Community College. Major Grimshaw is a graduate of the hundred-and-eighty-sixth session of the FBI National Academy. And Mayor, Major Grimshaw is a stud. All right. So, would you please read that?
Okay. So, to, to top this all off, I have a lifetime achievement award. Be it known, some people wait a lifetime for a moment like this. But you worked for it and earned it. Your contributions to this great city are too numerable to mention, and you have affected so many lives in various ways for the good. Thank you for all you've done to make this city great. On December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, this mayor's lifetime achievement award is presented to Darren Grimshaw.
Set the table, my friend.
I give you that, hold on. I've got one for you. And I know that I shot like this partnership, I've got one for my two. Major, appreciate you. Can I take a photo? A picture so we can all get in on this. Major? Would you please have a word? It's getting a big deal around these parts.
Well, first of all, thank you very much. It's very humbling. Um, I guess, first of all, I have to, um, say thank you to all of you for recognizing, uh, the accomplishments of the police department and the efforts that we take. Obviously, uh, we're forty-five officers down there. And a lot of the initiatives that take place and a lot of the programs that was read by the mayor are initiatives and, and years of planning and development that take place, not only through, um, members of our administrative staff, but officers throughout the department. So, we're fortunate in Burlington to have, um, the officers that we have and have the administration and, and leadership from City Hall as well. I've said before, uh, that Burlington is a fantastic community. Uh, we hold some of our issues, as every community does, but, um, with that, uh, there's, there's a lot of dedicated individuals. You know, the direction that I got from, uh, Chief Wunenburg, Chief Lutnager, Chief Beard, now Chief Kramer, you know, all center back to, obviously, the, uh, enriching our community and making sure that we've all got a safe place to live. And we all hold that dear to all of us. So, um, special thanks to my wife for putting up with, uh, the last thirty-one years of being in law.
That's clever for her, everybody.
And then, of course, thanks to my parents for, uh, just bringing me up the proper way.
Amen to that.
But, um, no, I, I appreciate this, I really do, but, um, you know, as, as, uh, Mr. Roberts said up here, uh, it's a collective effort. The other forty-four individuals down at the Burlington Police Department. And obviously, it takes more than one individual to, to kind of reach the, the ultimate goal. So, with that, thank you all again very much, and it's very much appreciated. Thanks, sir.
Well, on that note, uh, Grimshaws, you guys can get on out here if you want, as well as Arthur. Thank you for coming down.
We're all welcome to stay if you're having fun.
All the Grimshaws are welcome to stay, but Brett's gotta go.
Fair enough.
Good to see you, my friend. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one. Consent agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes reports and bonds. We have five resolutions. First is a resolution approving final acceptance and final payment and release of retention monies from the two thousand and eighteen Central and Washington Bridge repairs. The second is a resolution approving purchase of two new, uh, multi-equipped six-inch pumps from Star Equipment. The third is a resolution approving maintenance and operation from public infrastructure for Sunrise West Fourth Edition. The fourth is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the state of Iowa and Southeast Iowa Regional Planning for STBG funds for improvements on Agency Street from the existing PCC pavement near Melrose Court to the current street intersection. The fifth is a resolution accepting Iowa Clean Air Attainment Program funds for Roosevelt Avenue. And the sixth is a resolution authorizing an application for Surface Transportation Block grant funds for a medium-duty bus. We also have an appointment as well, Mayor Proton?
Yes, we have an appointment for the Riverfront Advisory Committee, um, appointing David Wiener.
Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your service.
Right on. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed? Mr. Reckie?
Mr. Reckie, Chris Reckie, twenty-two, twenty-eight, Madison Avenue. Number four and number five. The SGBT funds and, um, the resolution for the Roosevelt Avenue.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
See anybody else that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda? I see none. Counsel?
Y'all have a motion to approve all listed items under item one, consent agenda, except for number four and number five.
I think it's moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. First hearing.
Oh, she has MR on one.
Okay. Well, now's time for consideration of plans. I got JB. Now's time for consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and nineteen De Edwin and Gladys White Park renovations. Mr. Tisler?
This project was previously, previously put out for, uh, bid, uh, with approval of plans and specs at that time. Um, we did not receive any bids, so we're, uh, going back out. Hopefully, we'll receive some over this, uh, winter with a longer timeframe for completion. Uh, the project's essentially, uh, removing the, uh, western asphalt, uh, court and some of the asphalt entrances and, uh, walkways, um, regrading and seating that to have a open playfield. Um, and then improving with new concrete walkways, uh, to the site, to the courts, and then around the playground. Separate from this will be, uh, new playground equipment at the site. Uh, we have done, uh, some improvements already at the site, uh, resurfacing the, or coating the existing basketball court and relining that, and then installation of a shelter house on the existing court, so... Um, but this component is, uh, just, uh, removing, uh, some of the asphalt there, um, grading, uh, and then, uh, putting back new concrete.
I know I asked a question when we first talked about this, and I'll ask you again real quick, but we're not putting anything in place that has the potential to be ripped out if, or when there is a sewer issue in that area? Or the separation continues?
The plans, uh, do try and avoid especially all the manholes as seen on here. It does go over the box sewer, but, um, uh, all the manholes and, uh, different items are outside of all the paving areas, uh, and, uh, entrances in the playground area. So, uh, doing our best to avoid all that. And the thought is that if anything does need to get in there, that it would be minimal disruption to it.
Questions or concerns from the audience?
My name is O.N.T. Sloan. Reside at sixteen-twenty-one South Fourteenth Street here in Burlington. I am really happy about this because this park means a lot to me, and I will explain that further. But last July, I talked to, talked with, uh, Ryan Gorley about this renovation that was going on at the park. And I was glad that we was doing some things at that park. And I, I had, uh, talked to him about when that park got, when the renovations got done, is rededicating the park. And the reason I brought that up is Gladys and De Edwin White were very active in civil rights in this city for, for many years and did a lot of stuff for the city. They were extended family to many kids in this area. They also were very active in the Order of Eastern Star and the Masons. Gladys served as past worthy matron of Saint Edward Chapter Number Three here in Burlington, which was one of the founding chapters of Electra Grand Chapter, Order of Eastern Star, State of Iowa, and its jurisdiction. De Edwin was very active in the Masons. He was a past grand worthy patron. He was a Most Worshipful Past Grand Master of Elect, of, uh, Most Worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge. And both of these two people were very, very mentorship personality. They were two of my mentors in the Masonic Fraternity. And I th- I can't really remember, I tried to think back when this park, if there was ever an actual dedication to this park. I know that, you know, the name come up and it was there, but I don't remember any of that. And it, maybe there was, but I just don't remember it. I've been trying to think about that. But my plan was, when I talked to Mr. Gorley, was that, uh, when the work got done, that we'd have, I'm trying to get to, would have a rededication and have a Masonic and Eastern Star dedication at that park. And he thought that was a good idea. And so hopefully, when this all gets done, I say, I'm sorry that there was no bids. Come back, and hopefully, this will get pushed along in, next year in two thousand and nineteen to get done. And it's a good place, uh, you know, the NAACP has their Juneteenth celebration there every year for many years. And I think it's needed. And I'm glad that the park is, uh, gonna get some improvements. So hopefully, the things will look better in two thousand and nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Counsel?
No questions here.
Can I get a motion to close?
Y'all have a motion to close?
Second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye. Y'all have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the two thousand and nineteen De Edwin and Gladys White Park renovations.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay. Number two is consideration of an ordinance rezoning a portion of property locally known as sixteen-twenty-one Dodge Street from R-two single-family residential transitional to R-four multifamily residential zoning district. Mr. Tisler?
This request is, uh, to rezone a portion of, uh, the Perkins School site. Uh, they do have, uh, plans to subdivide this as well, uh, still working through that process. But essentially, the Perkins School and land to the south of that is what they're, uh, requesting to rezone from R-two single-family to R-four multifamily. Um, this did go to the Planning Commission. On November twenty-seventh, they voted zero to three with one abstained to recommend approval. Uh, their recommendation was based on concern of higher densities of the proposed development, uh, concern over infra- infrastructure capacity and the type of development fitting with the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, staff did, uh, recommend approval to the Planning Commission based on the future land use map and the provisions of the comprehensive plan. Uh, this is, uh, designated under the future land use map as neighborhood mixed use, which indicates R-four as a suitable zoning district. And also talks about reuse opportunities or options with schools and trying to find, um, ways to reuse schools and old, uh, larger old sites. The request, uh, from the applicant was to, um, their plan, I guess, as stated, was to build out twenty-four to thirty units, uh, to ideally sell as condos, but that also could be used as apartments, uh, done over the course of three to four years. Um, and then the lots, uh, would be, come, remain as, uh, R-two single-family, uh, non-traditional. This is, uh, two-point-two-four acres, uh, ninety-seven thousand, five-hundred square feet. Based on our zoning code, um, the maximum number of units would be thirty-nine. Uh, they did state they were looking to do twenty-four to thirty. This did come before Planning Commission and Council in two thousand and fourteen under a individual that was looking to buy, uh, the property at the time. Uh, that came forward as a request to rezone from R-two to R-four with a PUD overlay. Uh, a couple provisions of the PUD at that time was restricting the number of units to thirty-two units and then, uh, ensuring that only eight, uh, units accessed Dodge Street based on concerns over access in the neighborhood. And the remaining, uh, units, uh, for parking, uh, had access off of Summer Street to try and reduce some of the neighborhood congestion. Um, this request is just, uh, straight rezoning, um, but just, uh, wanted to clarify what was brought forward in the past was did restrict the maximum number of units and, uh, restrict access to the site, um, to try and alleviate some of the concerns.
Okay. Let's open it up for concerns from the audience.
Good evening. I'm back. Amy Martin, seventeen-twenty-nine West Acres.
Did you have, uh, didn't you store glasses? Man, I could've... Did you get your hair done?
Maybe. Well, it's only been four and a half years since you were my backdoor neighbor.
You look different. Good, good way.
Thanks.
Okay, please continue, sorry.
Um, well, we're battling this again. If I may approach, I have some handouts.
That's what it is, too. It's the hair. That's what it is.
It is the hair.
Yeah. Looks good.
Probably ten different colors.
That's all right. Thank you.
The first page of the handout I just gave you is a short history of the property. It's exchanged hands several times. Uh, I went back as far as, uh, records on Iowa land, records that I could find. During that time, there's never been any money exchanged. The property hasn't actually been sold. It's just been handed from one person to another. In essence, denying the ci- or the, the county the money that would have been generated through, um, transfer tax. Not a whole lot, regardless. That money goes to the county general fund. That is used to pay for, um, salaries of county employees, office supplies, just different things like that. What has happened now is the owner has not paid property taxes in quite some time. There's approximately eight thousand dollars that were due to, and would have been, um, brought up to date if paid by the end of November. The owner has not paid those taxes. The property went to a tax sale in June of two thousand and eighteen. The certificate was bought by, uh, Metro America. Metro American, excuse me. That essentially allows the property owner another nineteen months before they have to pay any taxes. At that time, if the property owner has not paid all of the taxes, then Metro American can start the deeding procedure to deed the property over to them. So we have a citizen, or not, um, I believe that the owner of this property lives in Utah. So you're, I'm wondering what his ties are to this area. Um, has he seen the neighborhood? Does he, does he know what it's going to do to this small neighborhood? There's only one way in and out, past that school, for all of the people that live in the cul-de-sac. And I live in the cul-de-sac, um, along with many people here, live in that area. They're facing the same problems. What is the traffic going to be like? If you put in the thirty, excuse me, twenty-four to thirty units, you could potentially triple the amount of people in that small area. We're talking just in a few blocks. And Dodge, from Perkins to Summer Street, is a one-way. The alley, or excuse me, the driveway off of Summer Street to the southeast corner of the property, um, is now gone. Those lots will be subdivided and sold separately. And there's two lots in that lower, um, corner. So that there's no ingress or egress to where a parking lot should be. The only place that a parking lot can go is in the back of the building to the south, where all the concrete is. Well, they've blocked the ingress and egress by subdividing those lots. Where, where's the road gonna go? To allow parking in that area? I've heard that they're gonna put, um, an entrance on Dodge Street. So you're going to have seventy-five people going in and out, one little driveway to Dodge Street, which is a one-way street, and causing extreme congestion. Not to mention, is the infrastructure around that area and the streets, is it gonna support all of that extra traffic? All of that extra parking?
Good.
Um...
Did they know that we're here on the phone?
No.
Yes. Wait, there's two representatives and, and I wanna let you finish speak. I, I was just waiting for our turn to be called on, but we do have answers to a lot of your questions.
Just sorry, those are the, those are the...
So whenever you're ready, um, we're here to answer those questions.
Okay. So, from the information I took off the Des Moines County GIS, the school building is only eleven thousand, eight-hundred and forty square feet. If you put twenty-four units in there, those high-end apartments are less than five hundred square feet.
If it's okay, I'll correct you. The, the gross building square footage without the gymnasium is thirty thousand, one-hundred and five feet. The gymnasium is an additional thirty-seven hundred and twenty-nine feet.
That's not what's on GIS.
You, you have to read through some of the additions under the, the property document page to be able to do the math. Um, there's, there's places where it's taken in and put back in, but, um, I went through that this afternoon and, and put the floors together. One of the floors was an addition. It's two stories versus three. Um, so you have to kinda, it, it's difficult to read. So, so I understand where you could, the confusion could be. But the square footage of the primary school structure itself is actually thirty thousand and one hundred square.
I guess that the size of the apartments wouldn't really affect us neighbors. The problem is, in the twenty-year plan to segregate the sewer system, we haven't, they haven't made it to our area yet. So if you're going to put twenty-four to thirty residences in the school alone, not to mention all of the property around it that will be subdivided and built on, you're increasing the usage on that sewer system that is not going to handle it. We have problems now without forty more bathrooms added to it. Water's still backing up into people's basements. We still have pressure, water pressure issues. I recall one, it was a torrential downpour regardless of when it was. But I took a picture because our cul-de-sac looked like a pond. You could see the water, and with a fountain, you could see the water spouting out of the manhole because the sewers could not handle the amount of water that was being poured down through the storm. So there is an issue. And I don't know when we're slated to have our sewers separated. There's property to the south, down in the bottom middle. That property is owned by a gentleman who wanted to develop it years ago. He was told no because the sewer system couldn't handle the development of that property. That property is less than the size of the school. I don't really see the need for luxury apartments around here. McConnell Lofts have availability. Schramm's Corner, I believe, may have availability. I'm not a hundred percent on that. That is also one of the handouts. Allowing the rezoning in this area is going to allow a lot of people to move in to a block. There are no other apartment buildings anywhere around. The closest one I think we've come up with would be Park Madison, to the extent of what they want to do here. It's a small, quiet neighborhood. And that's why I moved in there five years ago. We've had several other neighbors just move in there this year. That's why they've moved in there. And according to the comprehensive plan, it states, as I'm sure you're well aware, that decommissioned public properties such as schools be reused or redeveloped in ways compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. I understand that we need to do something with these buildings when feasible. I don't think this is feasible to put twenty-four to forty, to, excuse me, twenty-four to thirty units in that building. It is not consistent with the area and the neighborhood around it. You're going to put a bunch of people in a small building. History shows that in densely populated areas, you're going to have higher crime rates. I don't want to see that happen to our neighborhood. And that is what we're afraid of, that when these high-end apartments don't rent, that it will become Section Eight. And I didn't get the current figures for how many times the police department has been called out to Maple Hills. We don't want that to happen to our neighborhood. And I, and I don't think that you would move into a neighborhood that's like that. What are our property values going to do? What are our property taxes going to do? These are all very big concerns with a lot of us neighbors. I do have a statement. I can read, I can pass it around. This is from Rose Lee that lives at fourteen oh nine South Fifteenth. She couldn't be here tonight.
Do you have copies, do you have copies for everybody, or?
I don't, I was just gonna read it, but I don't want to take up any more of your time.
Can you leave that with us and I can make copies? Okay.
I can. I appreciate the conundrum you're in, wanting to do something with these schools. But again, you have to think of the citizens that have to deal with it every day, drive by it in such a dead-end area. I would probably say that we would lose neighbors if this goes through. And I'd hate to see that.
So let me ask you a question, Amy. So our, and this is not up on this particular hearing, but the other outlaying, single-family residents, did you have a problem with those being in there as well?
No. We would love to see that school torn down and single-family dwellings put in there to keep it consistent with the rest of that area.
Any other questions for Amy?
I don't.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? And can you leave that with Kathleen and she will make sure.
So we're, we have a response to, there's, you know, I don't know where we insert into the agenda if after everyone's public comments, we can respond to some of these concerns.
What, what is he asking?
He's, he's asking if you can respond. Do you want the public to continue doing what they're doing?
Yeah, let me, did you have, we have one other public response and then I'll, I'll let you. Okay, we've got two other. Because I, I get it, but what I want to do is, I don't want to be redundant with it. So, but I get it, I get it. We'll have you come next.
Again, O N T Sloan, sixteen twenty-one South Fourteenth. My objection to this project is the condition of our sewers. I just live south of there a couple of blocks. And I've had my sewer backup come home and I went down the basement and I'm walking around and it wasn't pretty and it wasn't nice. That, I live on Fort, South Fourteenth. The alley between Fourteenth and Fifteenth has had sewer work done several years ago. Just recently, the house on the corner on the, what would that be? It'd be the southwest corner of Fourteenth and Denmark. The alley, the sewer pipe busted, they had to redo the sewer. The alley looks, is terrible, is bumpy as heck, but that's, it's just an alley. But they had a lot of sewer trouble there. And this area does have sewer problems. And you put this many people in this area. With our sewer system, as you know, it's not, it's not that young, it's quite old. So that's my big problem with that, this many people, this many sewers going in there, I mean, lines going in there. And with the, with the age of our sewer system in that area and the problems that they have had and I have had, it's not, it's nothing that I want to see.
Thank you, sir.
Rick Masters, I live at fifteen fifteen South Fifteenth in Burlington. One of my biggest concerns, and it all stems back to a highly concentrated area with that many units, that many people. And what I'm looking at is, if you pull up a crime report from November seventeenth through today, you'll see the majority of crime is north of the school building. This neighborhood is quiet. What I look at is, I own several rental properties as well. I've also contacted some owners today that are multifamily and they've shared some of the same stories with me. When you have that high of concentration of people, there tends to be issues. Issues turn into drugs, drugs and violence, theft, vandalism. And it's, it's in black and white. I mean, you can pull it up on the, on the crimereports.com Burlington, Iowa. It spells it out. But at any rate, there are a lot of small kids in this neighborhood. There are a lot of young families. I grew up in this neighborhood. I've never left. I'm still there for that reason, because it's a quiet neighborhood. I would like to stay, see it stay the same. And I appreciate a no vote from all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Hello, my name is Deb Dixon and my husband and I live at fourteen eleven Perkins. I come before you asking for a no vote. Several reasons, just the high density, the amount of people that would be living in a small building. I don't think we should use the terms high-end apartments, condos, because high-end is a very subjective term. What is high-end to one person is not to the next. So we should just call them either apartments or condos. And there's a big difference between an owner owning a condo and an apartment building. So I think it should be clear if it's apartments or condos. Also, it was stated, when we reuse buildings and make decisions, we should look at the long-term positive impact or negative impact on the community. And for our neighborhood, I think this would be a negative impact in the long run. I think that we all recognize that it would just be an apartment building. It may start out nice, but we're not a high-end neighborhood. So I, I just think it would be a lot of problems eventually down the way. I would hope that, I know we have a developer from out of town, but everyone here has lived in this community for many years. We pay our taxes, we work here, we shop here. And I would hope that we would have your support for a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I get you next, Rex, to lead.
Hi, my name is Becca Harchie. And my husband Scott and I just bought, actually, in this neighborhood two months ago. I, well, September. We live at fifteen oh five Summer. And we are a one-income family, so we are middle class. I stay at home with our children and I know that's not important. But what I'm getting at is, we wanted a quiet neighborhood for our boys. We have three sons to grow up in. Also, I am mentioning that I have a handicap son who is wheelchair-bound and it is very, very, very hard to find a home that is handicap accessible in our price range. We, we see the lots right across from the school, so we're on the back side. And our street is very quiet and actually Acres is a private drive. And I did not know that when we bought the house, but I'm thankful now because we maintain that street. We have to provide snow removal and, and take care of it. My kids can currently play outside and they feel safe. A major thing for me is my son Samuel gets ambulances rides a lot. And my main concern is the safety of my children and that they would be able to get to my children if something were to occur with my son. That's why we are, you know, that's kind of why we, one, we love Burlington and we stayed in Burlington because we needed to be able to get to. So with all those people there and if they were parking there and then the ambulance would have to come to my home, I would be concerned about my son's health and them being able to get to him. I understand it's a big property. And honestly, if I would have known this before we bought the property, I would not have bought the house. And so the, we, obviously, the house was a lot of money. And my fear is that I'm going to be flipped upside down on top of all the other things that my husband provides for our home and deals with. So that's my concerns.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rex.
Hi, Rex Sizer. My wife and I live at sixteen thirty-three West Acres Drive, right behind what used to be the Backstop fans. One of my concerns, of course, is with the sewer system. I just spent twelve thousand dollars upgrading my sewer system. Without proper development or upgrading, it's all gonna be for naught. I don't look forward to looking out my front window and seeing the side of somebody's duplex or single-family dwelling, which would be. I guess if it all came down to that and what it would be, I'd be looking to move out of the area and out of town, unfortunately. I guess I wouldn't be so against this if the city or the developer would consider finishing Acres all the way through. I know my neighbors probably aren't in favor of that, but I would at least have a street and it would give four to five of my neighbors their front yard back from that private drive. Like I said, I appreciate a no vote on this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sizer. Mr. Myers.
I'm Larry Myers. I live at sixteen thirteen Acres, which is just south of the building. Lived there thirty-five years. We put in corrections for our sewer, so prevent backup. We've done all kinds of water prevention aspects. We have some pump, of course, and backup. So we spent a lot of money in that regard. And the family really has grown up there and really wants to maintain it. But, you know, if things change, we may be forced to do, do something different. But because it becomes cost prohibitive after a while, unless there are improvements made in both the storm sewer and the rager sewer system. Thank you. I'd like to see you both know of towards.
Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Mr. Myers. How's your wife doing?
Uh, pretty good, pretty good. Yeah, she's actually taking care of her sister in Omaha right now.
Would you give her my regards?
Thank you, I will.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Dino.
Hey, my name is Dean Finacy. I live at two one one seven Northern Drive. I don't live there, but I got a best stepmother in the whole world lives there, Rita Finacy. She's on fixed income, she's retired. She had the same problem all these people do. Water backs up, she has to enter basement. And she, she's on a very fixed income. I think the best idea is to, you can't save every building, you can't save every building in town. Tear down and maybe build some houses there for families. I mean, I think that's the only thing you can do because I, my stepmother has the same problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, I'm gonna give the developer a chance to address some of the comments. Sir?
Are you ready for me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, please go ahead.
So I wanted to start off by saying I apologize that I couldn't be there in person. I'm, I'm in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm working with the ownership group, I'm the engineer that, that they brought on to work on this project. I have been to Burlington. I've, I've stayed at the building. I've been there, I've driven through your neighborhood and I completely understand where everyone is coming from. I want to speak to a couple of things quickly, just so I can give you some sort of response to everything that's been brought up. First, I want to speak to the density. So the, the plan is, is to go in and if you've never been in the Perkins School, I'm sure some of you, some of you have probably gone to elementary school there. So the plan is to go. So the plan is to go in and each of the classrooms basically split them in half and create two units. And by doing that, it's gonna be about twenty-four units. We say twenty-four to thirty. The real plan is closer to twenty-four. And if you look at that on its face and you say, okay, well, twenty-four units in the building and then there are seven additional pieces of property. So thirty-one dwellings are on that piece. Now, when you look around in that neighborhood, it is a little bit higher density. But it, it probably sounds worse than it is because when I look at that square footage, you get an average of anywhere from nineteen to twenty-one dwellings in that same area. So it is higher density, but it's not extremely higher density as would it looks on face value. And when I initially looked at it, that was a concern that I had, so I looked at that. I, I didn't want to increase the density, you know, that much more. So I understand that concern. The other concern with the sewer. So this, along with a, a couple of other things, please keep in mind that we're not getting, we're not getting an approval for this plan. Right? We're asking for it just to be rezoned so that we could move forward to, to get an approval. And included in that is evaluating the sewer line and does the sewer line need to be upgraded? Evaluating the stormwater on the site. We've put a large chunk of land south of the building for stormwater. If we end up needing to do some underground storage, you know, that's a possibility, but these are things that can't be evaluated until we at least get it rezoned and replatted. That's kind of the first step. And from there, we're, we're not asking for an approval for us to just go through and get a certificate of occupancy and, and we're ready to go. But these are evaluations that can't really be done financially until the rezoning piece is there. Once that piece is there, then we'll continue to work with the city to make sure that the sewer system is not being overtaxed. To make sure that the stormwater is being handled properly. But those are, those are engineering fees that are gonna be accrued and, and planning fees that are gonna be accrued and a lot goes into that process. And that's not something that the developer can risk financially until they know that they at least have a platform to work off of. Which is all what we're asking for today. Is just the rezoning and the replating is the platform for us to move forward and to make those evaluations. But now-
Let me talk to him, Dave, is that fine?
Go ahead.
This is, this is John. I'm one of the new co-owners of the property. All that stuff you said about transferring hands that was going between family members and friends. And then one of the individuals that eventually became the owner brought me in as a partner. And we did a quick plan B. That's why it's currently owned by the LLC that we own, Foresight Trust. I'm sorry, Foresight Turf. After listening to your concerns, what I think would be ideal is instead of doing twenty-four units, doing twelve units, what Dave was just saying is we're planning on cutting those things in half. Where there are currently classrooms, there's already plumbing in place. There's already sewers. And so all we'd be doing is converting where there's currently a classroom instead of two five-hundred unit properties, one one-thousand unit property. At this point, just addressing several things, first of all, you can't just tear down the building and get rid of it because we have a rooftop lease that's signed over thirty years, so, you know, I didn't, we didn't sign that, we just inherited it when we got it. So getting rid of the building is not only not financially feasible, it's not possible because of contract. Trying to think of all the different things that were said. On, on the north side, where we were looking at having five things of land, that was, we were thinking that we could potentially sell those off for maybe five thousand dollars each. And I assumed that if any builder would buy those, he would just be building homes that are very consistent with that area. And if it was financially feasible, we might be able to do that. But from the people that I, I mean, we, we listed it, I've already listed it. And there's no takers on that. So even if, and, and that was listed for maybe like fourteen thousand bucks. And there's been absolutely no interest. So even if it is rezoned, the odds that somebody down the road will build houses there is, i- i- it wouldn't be something that would be done all at once. It would be if we could have someone do it. Now, someone talked about, is this gonna be apartments or is this gonna be condos? If we had a total of twelve buildings or if we had a total of twelve classrooms that were converted, the way it works, I am a commercial real estate appraiser, so I understand how this works a little bit more. You can't have zoning for condos and then zoning for apartments separately. My plan would have been to convert each of these one at a time because it doesn't make sense. The bones or the structure of the building is already in place. And so what would make sense would be to convert just one classroom into an apartment. And then once it is, it is an apartment, have it rented. And, and then once that is going unfeasible, we got one person in there, then we convert the next one and, and so forth. It doesn't make sense to say, hey, let's dump three hundred thousand dollars into this in the hope that we can do it. We would just convert them one at a time. Once they were all converted, that's when we would have to turn around and say, now we can sell them because now that it's, now that it's all converted, now we can change the zoning on these condos and we can sell them to individuals. And the advantage of this is, I think the Perkins Building right now is just two people there. It's dilapidated, you know, with time. It's barely, the two people that are paying rent are barely covering the cost of the place. If you had a total of just twelve units with twelve people in there, you have affordable housing and if it's a condo, then you just put an HOA on it. And they're gonna be paying for all the upkeep of the area. I mean, the plan was to move the playground equipment to the back. So you have, you still have a nice playground for people in that area where the, where the extra land will be where water can drain to if it rains. And then additionally, I'm sorry, I was losing my train of thought. Additionally, you'd have the twelve different owners that could own a one-thousand square foot condo and the building would stay there. You know, if the building needs to be painted, if the lawn needs to be mowed, it's paid for with the HOA by the homeowners. So nothing would be some huge robust change all at once. It would be trying to take this building and do something that's financially feasible for the investors and also feel good for the community. So I, I mean, after hearing your concerns, and, and Dave, I hope you, you don't care, but I would say we should probably try to just do twelve units.
Yeah, I think if you did the twelve units, they're more than a thousand square feet each. But we'd have to look and see what the numbers are. But yeah, they would be bigger units than, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's the reason there.
The sewers would be the exact same. There's already two bathrooms in each of those classrooms, a boy and girl bathroom. You could have twelve two-bedroom, two-bathroom units. The land, you know, if, if you rezoned the land and you chopped it up, it's not like it would sell overnight. I, I talked to builders in that area and they're getting land for free. And so the question is, is, uh, do they want to pay five or ten thousand dollars to have it in the middle of the city and then build a, a property? Or did they want to get it for free and, and do it out there? It's almost not financially feasible for them to even build a home. Because, you know, at eighty-five dollars a foot, building a one-thousand square foot home, they're at eighty-five thousand. And that's about what homes are selling for in that, that area. So there needs like very little profit margin for them.
Ken, someone wanted to bring up two-
I agree that, I agree that maybe there should be a no vote right now and maybe we can talk about changing this to twelve units.
Say that again.
Could you repeat that?
He, he said, he said he would agree that there should be-
I agree. After, after hearing your concerns, I, I agree with the no vote right now. And maybe we can talk about only doing a total of twelve units, understanding that the sewer is already in place. There's already twelve classrooms that have boy-girl bathrooms. We would be converting those twelve units to apartments. Those apartments would become two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartments. And then once they are converted, because we can only do them one at a time, it's not financially feasible to do all twelve all at once. We would convert one apartment. Once we have it rented, then we would have enough money and we would know that we can do the next one and so forth. Once all twelve were rented, then we could sell them as condos. But you can't have zoning for apartment and condos. I could just say, okay, uh, this one's finished, now I want to sell it as a condo. We, we get it zoned as apartments first and then once we have the twelve apartments finished, they turn into, we, then we can rezone it to condos and sell them individually as condos. But in the meantime, we're taking care of it and then when we sell them as condos, the HOA takes care of it.
Okay, okay.
But I, I definitely agree with the no vote is what I'm saying right now and we should probably come back and only ask for twelve units.
You know, that, that sounds, uh,
so that we don't have to come back, does it make sense to do a conditional rezoning? That way they can determine what makes sense. I mean, if he said, if he said twenty-four units or twelve units.
We, we've done conditional rezonings in the past. Generally, it started that way. That'd be the only, I, if you want to make amendment, I don't know if that amendment is sufficient, but we generally started them as what they requested. Instead of through the process, so that planning commission can vote on that as a twelve unit or what it is.
I like what the developer said. I'd like to see him come back and and let's have further chats with the twelve units. Does that, does that sound good with you, sir?
Yes.
It sounds good with us.
Okay.
Yeah. In addition, one other concern that we want to alleviate is, you know, the intent isn't to have all the traffic come off of Dodge Street. We can easily, you know, pour some concrete and have a driveway, so that's coming off of Summer Street. And we can include that in the new plan as well. You know, we don't, we don't want to overwhelm the traffic on, on Dodge and in Perkins, on Perkins. So, you know, that's not the intent there.
Yeah, I think there's definitely more than, more than one that's gonna come.
Once the zoning comes through, the main partner right now, who's the guy that has had problems with money and taxes, he would be bought out. Once the, once the zoning is through, it would be my brother that would become the new investing partner and he's a successful real estate guy like myself.
Okay, okay. Okay. Well, thank you, sir. We're going to, I think we're good?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We're motion to post no.
No.
No, we're gonna vote.
We're gonna, we'll have, most, would you want comments from the council at all or just want to move on?
Do you guys have any comments that you want to make or?
Uh, the only thing I would say is, you know, I had an apartment there thirty-five years ago, right around the corner on Summer. Yes, indeed, there's a sewer problem there. Uh, 'cause I cleaned it up for the landlord a couple of times, so I can't believe we're still living with that. Only thing I ever get dicey on these type of conversations is when we start characterizing as people that don't have enough money as a, a bad neighbor. I started out, most of my friends, we all lived in the manor and we came out alright. So I, you know, I have a little bit of trouble with that. Anytime that that comes up, I'll be honest with you, you kind of lose me on that one, but. At this point in time, I think the developer said, hey, we'll, we'll go back to the drawing board, see if we can't get something a little more valid. And I think we can at least take a look at it. So my vote would be no for tonight.
I, I, my vote's gonna be no as well, but I would like to make a couple of points for the, for the neighbors that are here from the community. So one of my largest concerns is the size of that building is gonna cost anywhere from five hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars to tear down. From an investor's standpoint, the only thing that is most likely gonna happen with that structure is some type of density change and redevelopment of that building. From a developer's standpoint, there is no developer that's gonna come in and tear down that building and then plot out lots and put in single-family homes. Because the cost to do that and then to pass those on individually to single-family home buyers would be so much that they would be unaffordable. So I, I really want to make sure that that expectation exists unless the building is abandoned and then turned over to the city, at which point now we've got another Apollo School sitting in your front or backyard, which I'm sure all of you, you'd say that that's worse than having somebody come in and try and invest money into a building. Because the last thing we want is broken windows and boarded-up doors and vagrants and that will really pull people in that are gonna be much worse than somebody else who's living in a low to moderate income housing. I do understand your density. It sounds like the developer is gonna be very accommodating and working with us in order to ensure that that's not creating any problems for you or for the city.
Twelve, twelve units. Make a lot more sense than twenty-four to thirty.
Whether it's twelve or twenty-four, I mean, that, we'll let them figure out what makes sense. But, um,
I just can't see it.
But I just want-
You don't live that, Nick, and we do.
I'm sorry, we're-
So I, I do understand that. And, and I have a vested interest in it too. I own a house, a couple of them right across the street from the school. So I'm very familiar with it. I know that while people live there, it's not very well maintained, especially in the summer months. And it's becoming more of an eyesore. Eventually, I was in the building six or seven years ago and the entire second floor, the, the ceilings are starting to cave in. So my biggest concern is that at some point in time, somebody's going to abandon the building and then it's gonna sit there and get worse.
Isn't it just full of asbestos too?
I, I have no idea. But anyways, I want to make those comments because I know that there's a lot of concern from people that live in that area regarding the density. And it sounds like he's gonna be very accommodating, but I wanted to make those points before we finish up.
Mayor Protem.
Um, yeah, just kind of echoing a few things that, one, I've never had an experience where a developer from not in the area took the time to call and then address and agree with the majority of, you know, the neighbor's concerns. So that's great. I think we know where we all are, so let's, I would like to.
Peanut butter?
That's correct. It's, it's not economically feasible to tear down, but I do like the idea of the lower density with the twelve units. I think that is something maybe that we can all all stomach or at least consider is a better option. You know, maybe there is not an ideal option for everybody, but that is definitely a better option. Thank you, John, for taking the time to call in.
Can I get a motion?
Your honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Second, Kathleen.
This is to close. Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning a portion of the property locally known as sixteen twenty-one Dodge Street from R-two, single-family residential transitional to R-four, which is multifamily residential zoning district.
Second.
Okay, so a vote yes is your board, a vote no is your government.
Wilson?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Graham Murray?
No.
Campbell?
No.
Rinker?
No.
Okay. That's no. Alright. No.
You're too nuts now.
Could you come to the, can I have you come to the?
Amy, Margaret, yeah. I, I think that they're confused when they're talking about the rezoning of the outlined properties. They're not understanding, those are already zoned for R-two. But then he said they're gonna do this and then rezone it for condos after it's done? I don't, I don't know. I heard that several times, he said that.
Hey, he said he was gonna build the apartments and then they would resell them as condos as a housing association.
Right. And then rezone it.
I thought he was just saying that there was no difference.
He, he did mention creating a housing association which would then
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
help maintain and pick up the cost to maintain the- He, he did mention creating a housing association, which would then, um, help maintain and pick up the cost to maintain the, the grounds and the building.
Right, but I, but I think some of his terminology is, he's not understanding things when he's talking about the rezoning and...
We'll see what his plan is.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get down to the nuts and bolts of it, and he'll have a full understanding moving forward, everybody will have a full understanding moving forward, so whatever questions are unanswered, they'll be answered.
And I promise you, all, all the concerns that were raised, there are going to be things that we're going to talk about, I mean, we're not just going to let, let it go.
Sure, sure, and... But the one thing is, he said he, they're going to buy his brother out, and when that happens, things will get taken care of, but what about the property taxes that are due now?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to see that happen first, buy his brother out now, but they, you know, the thing is, even if we rezon it, uh, if we rezon it today, they'd still have to get the building, uh, approved. And it's not going to go, obviously, as it, as, as it's stated, so we'll see what he come back, come back with.
I, I just was looking on here, it looks like the property taxes have been paid by somebody else, the certificate holder, they'll have to buy out the certificate holder to get that, those certificates released on the building.
Correct.
Right.
But regardless, they never paid their taxes.
No, I understand, but they're going to want to do that before they invest in a building, otherwise the certificate holder has the ability to take the building.
We're gonna move, we're gonna move, all right, everybody move, nobody freeze. All right, hey, and I just want to say, for you guys that did come down for this, I know this is serious business for you guys, you know, it's, you know, we don't live in that neighborhood. I, I know that you guys are, uh, uh, you mean what you got to say, God bless you, hon.
You want, you want to buy my house? I think you're a real good deal.
I'm about to say it depends on how good the deal is, so, the camera's on, honey, we can't talk about it now. Uh, but thank you for coming down, we, we hear what you have to say, we're not, uh, we're not just blowing you off. That was a nice move, whoever brought Becca down, that was a smooth move, man, when she rubbed the kid, she pulled at my heartstrings. God bless all of you, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna try to work for you guys, we're gonna try to work, you guys are residents, we, we love you. Okay, ordinance is next, and you guys can get on out here if you want to now. You're welcome, thank you for coming down, same to you all.
Merry Christmas.
Your honor, I have a, I have a motion for a final adoption of ordinance amendment to the ordinance number three-two-two-zero. An ordinance creating the Sunrise West PUD overlay district by making changes to section four land use requirements.
Second.
Number second, Mr. Tisland.
No changes from the previous two readings, this again, uh, sets out, lays out what the setback requirements are for newly created lots. Um, they're looking to continue development in Sunrise West, but on individual lots instead of one large lot, so it just changes the PUD to address that.
Right on, it's the final adoption, we've been here several times, peeps, but if there's anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns, you're welcome at this time, is there one? I see none, council? None. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a motion for the final adoption ordinance amending various sections of chapter one-six-one Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
And no changes from previous two readings, uh, trying to make some updates, make code a little more clear and, uh, address what other code requirements are.
Right on, trying to make it groovy for all of you, anybody from the audience, questions or concerns? I see none, Dean moved, he flinched a little bit, but he didn't get up, all right, council?
None.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Resolutions.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving an application for funds from the Transportation Alternatives Program, known as TAP, for the West Avenue Trail Connection.
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Tisland.
We applied for this, uh, grant previously and were not awarded funds for it, um, we did have, uh, local match set aside in this current year's, uh, budget, uh, for this grant. Um, but I still won't be expending those since we didn't, uh, get the grant, so we're applying again. Um, these, uh, funds would be available on federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, so a few years out, but, uh, feel this is a important connection from the existing trail that goes from Edstone Middle School up to West Avenue, and then there's kind of a, um, sidewalk on the south side of, uh, Notre Dame. Not the easiest, uh, travel, not the safest there, uh, and close to the roadway, this would allow for a, a better connection over to, uh, across Roosevelt to the, um, Recplex, the hospital. And then follow in line with the trail that's, uh, next spring going to connect over to Winchester Drive on Mason Road.
Right on, questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, council?
None.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Number two.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of Parkview subdivision.
Second?
Sec.
Thank you, sir, this is the final, we've been here before, Mr. Tisland.
This is, uh, three lots at the former Parkview Care Facility on Shakkacon Drive, uh, looking to plot these, that we're able to sell them. Uh, we will be bringing forward some covenants, uh, at upcoming meeting as well, just, uh, requiring actual, uh, construction on the lots if someone buys them within a timeframe and, uh, specifying a minimum size and, uh, a few details there.
Okay, questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, council?
Make someone a lovely home.
You got that right, well said, counselor, Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Number three.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of the fourth addition to Sunrise West subdivision.
Second. Second, uh, again, this is the final plat, we've been here before, Mr. Tisland, refresh us.
Uh, this again, uh, is, um, final plat, which plats out the street right away for the extension of Cambridge Drive to the north end of the subdivision. Uh, one lot on the end of, uh, Jim Kelly Drive, and then an outlot which cannot be built upon until they further subdivide that. Um, within this outlot, there may be future street connections, uh, from east to west, uh, especially to Sequoia Drive to fall in line with, uh, plans that, uh, street plans for this area.
Right on, questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, council?
None here.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the preliminary plat of the fifth addition to Sunrise West subdivision.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Tisland.
So this is preliminary plating the, uh, lots, uh, that you just approved, the PUD for Sunrise West, so this is the first step in actually creating the lots. Uh, they will have to come back, uh, and create a final plat before being able to sell those lots, but, um, just five lot subdivision on the east side of Cambridge Drive.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, council?
None here.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Yes, please.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay, takes us to the consent, number four, which was removed by Mr. Repke. But I mean, who's keeping track, right? Number four is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the state of Iowa and Southeast Iowa Regional Planning for STGB funds for improvements on Agency Street from the existing PCC, excuse me, PCC pavement near Melrose Court to the current street intersection, was pulled by Mr. Repke.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, both of you.
Chris Repke, twenty-two-twenty-eight Madison Avenue, mostly what I'm going to talk about and ask about is procedure with this STGB grant. And I figured we could have discussion at this time. Last year, the Madison Avenue one came up at the same time of year and was done really quick. One week it came up at a work session, next week it was passed to do the grant at the council, same thing basically with this one. I guess, what I'm asking is if this really grants like this should be done in the middle of October. For the reason it gives the citizens of the area which it affects them some time in which to approach the council, try to get the SGBD grant changed. Errors in the grant changed, or misnomers in the grant changed. That did not happen with the Madison Avenue, and I think for any grants like this, it needs to happen in the future for the sake of the citizens of the area which that grant is being applied for. Because otherwise, once you pass it and once it goes through the system, it is basically a rubber stamp when it gets going. As the old saying goes, you can have it when you pry it from my gold, my dead cold hands, it's kind of like free money for politicians. You know?
I'm not getting any money out of this.
Well, the city is, when you get it, the city is, because you, you got the grant money for Madison, you wouldn't give it up, and then you gave money to the Recplex, that's a whole nother story. So the timing, you need to have a different timing with these grants, and also last year, why is this SGTB grant under a consent resolution? Last year, the Madison Avenue wasn't, it was a discussion at the council meeting. It's, it's just, there seems to be inconsistencies, and I think what I'm bringing up is, you need to have these one grants done more in the middle of October. So residents have a more chance to discuss them, you can pass approving sending it, but it doesn't have to be until the end of December. Secondly, why did inconsistencies from last year, last year was a discussion item, this year it is a consent resolution.
Let me address that one for you, and then I'll open it up.
Okay.
When it comes to that is, um, if we're expecting for there to be conversation, if somebody's, the only time we put something on the consent is if we pretty much figure that nobody's got anything to say about it, we've already had conversations and nobody had anything to say. Because we want to always leave that open to, to have, that's why we still have the safety, you can remove it from the consent, just like you just did.
Right, right.
So when something's, when we don't want to talk about it, when it's put on the consent, it's because we've already gone through and nobody's got anything to say, so what's the point? So that, that's why there's variances there, because if nobody has anything to say about it, we're not, we're just going to add it to the consent agenda.
Okay.
Because this isn't changing anything.
One thing I'd like to bring up, and you can question the validity of grants, but the importance of grants allows us to continue to maintain things like infrastructure or initiate new projects while not requiring us to necessarily raise the property taxes that go, would go along with, with having those projects or maintaining that.
We, we can debate that, and this, we should probably set up a work council session to debate that rather than time right now. I think that's a good debate to have, and that would be a work council session, I'd love to debate with you on that, but now is not the time.
You know grants are time sensitive though, Chris.
Right, that's what I'm saying though, usually...
So we can't, I mean, you, you were saying earlier that we should do them only at certain times.
Well, no, I'm saying, you've done the last two, this one included, it's done, it, due at the end of December, this grant. And you do it two weeks, three weeks before it needs to be done, this should be done beginning October. It's, you know, write the grant up, start looking at the grant.
See, we don't have, we don't have grant writers, it's not like...
Yeah, but still, see, but the Madison Avenue one, you, you could have redone that grant, so it didn't hurt the property residents of Madison Avenue. And you got to look at that, and that's, that's what I'm saying, that's why I brought this up, is because you need a different timing for this. Rather than bang, bang, it's done, and all of a sudden, residents, if there's an issue, and I'm talking about future SDBJ grants or other grants.
But Chris, it wasn't bang, bang, it seemed like it was bang, bang to you, baby, but we had, we had lots of conversation about that, Chris, you invited us to your home for tea, bro.
I, we only had one, no, we only had, once the grant was passed and submitted, there was no going back on it, there was no changing it, there was no doing anything with it. Because it had to go, and so basically, when it goes through the system, I followed that system all the way through, we need to have a work council session meeting on this and discuss it. And this is a way, this is not the time to do this right now, it needs to be done at a different time period.
And you're under the assumption that on the Madison, uh, Madison Avenue project, that we didn't feel we made the street safer, I think we did.
You did.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying.
That's a debate, but see, you think that, but I, but I think this, and that's what I, and that's what I voted for. But that's again, that's why you need to do these grants in October, so you can have longer discussion on it.
We're still discussing it now, and it's already been passed.
But it's already been passed, but that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm trying to say, do these SGBD grants in October. You, you, yeah, so you have time at the end of the deadline, so people can talk about them, talk to you more about it, rather than a bang, bang, because once that grant was done. Once the grant's done, it's done, it's in paper and cannot be revised.
I distinctly remember giving many people the opportunity to discuss this, and they didn't show up. You, you, you have a hundred, you had a hundred and whatever, I don't know the exact numbers, residents, and maybe ten showed up.
That's still a good percentage, so anyways.
But no one showed up.
But, but that's, that's, that needs, so, that's my thing with this SGBD grant, was this the timing now, since it was open, it was allowed to discuss it.
I got you.
So otherwise, I looked at the grant, I read the grant through, yeah, and I found what I found, I talked to Mr. Howe about one of the misconceptions in it. Uh, but that was in the Madison Avenue grant too, but I think he'll take that in consideration for next grants. And that, but otherwise, I, I, there's no, nothing I see glaring in that one compared to the Madison Avenue. But as, I'm really wanting to...
Stay up there, because we're going to do five next.
Number five, yeah.
Well, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and, uh...
Do you want to do five?
On number...
No, we gotta do four, right, yeah.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay, uh...
Number five.
Number five, number five is a resolution accepting Iowa Clean Air Attainment Program funds for Roosevelt Avenue. Mr. Repke?
I'm sorry, I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second, second. I believe there was something done with the timing and the lights in the two thousands, does anybody remember that? I, I remember there was something...
There was talk about it, I think, but I, it's so far...
I know, but I mean, so it has been done. Secondly, I don't, you know, I drive Sunnyside Mount Pleasant a lot, because that's the way to the hospital and that, so... And I drive Roosevelt quite a bit, I ex, and, and I just don't see, only, if only when I see any intersection with a problem, it's agency going west. You only get four through, four cars through that one before it turns red, usually, going west on agency there at Roosevelt. I see no reason to apply for this grant, especially since you're using again TIF money, which again adds to the overall tax burden. If you're going to do it, this money would really be better spent in the neighborhoods, the older neighborhoods of the town, improving side streets, improving curbs, improving sidewalks, improving curb cuts for people on wheelchairs, uh, in those areas, this money would be better spent there than, than adding Mount Pleasant and Roosevelt to the system. I would say vote no, it's TIF money, it's not two-hundred-forty-six thousand, it's four-hundred-seventy-one thousand dollars. Um, according to this, the memo from December sixth, because of the mansion grant, I see this money being better spent in neighborhoods for curbs and that. It's TIF money, which adds again to the, no matter what, you're adding as to the tax burden of the city if you do it as a grant, of a bond or whatever. But it'd be better off for the neighborhoods in curbs, sidewalks, that are needed there, and approaches for handicap, thank you.
Chris Repke.
So vote no.
Thank you, sir, any other, uh, comments from the audience on this, on number five? I see none, council?
Well, I'm going to vote yes for it, because we've already discussed it, and I might feel this is one way for us to prevent a bypass, uh, which would be every town that has one, uh, our size is a killer for that town, so I think, I think this would improve the, the traffic corridor, so I'm voting yes.
I agree with John, I think it improves the traffic corridor, my short-term concern is for the bypass, but I do have a long-term concern. To Chris's point though, the concern about ADA compliant, uh, ramps, um, we do get a, a, a presentation annually on the city's ADA plan. Um, I think I talked to Nick a while back, and we're putting somewhere around fifty thousand dollars into ADA compliant ramps annually, which is, and we're, we're trying to do those gradually. And then if you take into consideration all the other ramps that are redone when we do redo curb and gutter or street projects, uh, we put roughly a hundred thousand dollars into those annually. So I know that's a concern for you, but, and just to put your concerns right, we are working on it, uh, but it's one of those things that we work on gradually because of the funding.
And I'm for it, because anytime you can reduce automotive emissions, I think that's the way of the future, and I'm glad that Burlington's progressive in that arena.
That grant also made, uh, Hightower shave, he looks like a baby, it's pathetic, so. We're good?
Yeah, we gotta vote for it.
Let's vote, number five, Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Okay, you guys have been fantastic tonight, now, uh, if there's anything that we have not addressed tonight that you need to get off your chest, now's your time, is there one? Dean?
Hello, the Tennessee two-two-one-one-seven Northern Drive, I know we all want to get out of here, so trying to make this brief. Uh, about, like I said, my stepmother lives by the time I've been on those apartments, I got one question. If I got this right, there are new apartments down here by the fire station, those four-story buildings. You get a new apartments in, uh, old high school, you don't want to put new apartments in there. Do we have that many single people living in Burlington for all those, all these apartments?
Well, they gotta be single, Dean.
Uh, or, or for families, and you're talking about high-end. Uh, I guess I'm in a different world, because most people I know don't make that much money living in a high-end apartments. I mean, I'm in, I don't make that much money, I, I don't, but I can't see how this city's can have, I could be wrong, have all those apartments filled up. Filled up by peop, by people, families, or... filled up by peop, by people, families or people, I could be wrong about that. I see we're doing good on Mount Pleasant Bridge, I just don't like my favorite route being closed off, but that's the price I have to pay. Uh, but, uh, I'm trying to think of something else, but I, okay, the police, they do a fantastic job. The, a lot of cities, a lot of states are having trouble finding police down, and they're critical, in critical condition. And the problem is, excuse language, but, but the problem is you have a few bad apples, and everybody thinks, oh, policemen are like that, and it ain't there, and it's full of crap, because most policemen care about the community, care about the people, and care about where they live. And the firemen, they do a good job, people for the city do a good job, but I still say, oh, Cascade Bridge.
See, you could tell.
They're all alone, uh, they used to, you have whoopee on it, and go want her to get a kiss, kiss, but not anymore, it's so alone, Cascade Bridge.
You wouldn't be a very good poker player, dude.
No, I wouldn't, I don't play poker, one more thing, and I will, you better be alone. And it's, like, um, I'm not political correct, so I wish you a Merry Christmas, I wish you a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, may the Lord Jesus Christ be with you, and peace be with you, and Merry Christmas.
Hey, Mike, Dean?
See you too, see you too.
That's right, you know what, this time next year, that's what I'm going to be thinking about missing, you coming down and giving me my Christmas card every year, Dean, thank you, sir. Um, anybody else from the audience? Anybody else except for Chris Repke?
I have questions.
I'm just playing with you anyway.
Yes, you know we love you.
Mr. Tisdale? Nothing, sir, Kathleen? Peanut butter?
Yeah, just a, a couple shout outs, Heritage Trust had a fantastic, uh, what did they call that, Kathleen? Victorian.
Christmas tour of homes.
Christmas tour of homes last night, and if you missed it, it was really, really something to see. Beautiful decorating goodies, champagne spiked cranberry inspired punch, it was really, really fun, so I'm hoping that they'll make that an annual event, because I really enjoyed that. Living windows rocked, I mean, that was really well done this year, thank you for the nice weather, despite what Bob Sahr said, it was not a bone chilling cold, it was actually quite balmy forty degrees. So just throw that out there for you, Bob. Um, actually, coming up, we've got holiday shop hop on Thursday, so if you're one of those last minute people that need a last minute gift idea, or two, or three, or five, like I do, be sure and take care of, take care of that downtown, make sure your dollars, uh, should stop in Burlington, shop local. Um, and remember those that holiday season that sometimes get overlooked, your newspaper carrier, you know, maybe your teachers, make sure and, and remember them, so that's all I have. Have a blessed holiday, thanks.
Well said, Peanut Butter.
Nice job, Noel.
Counselor?
So is this our last one till January yet?
Yes, this is it.
Well, um, my only thing would be Merry Christmas, uh, Burlington, it's our own little version of Bedford Falls, I think, uh, from the old, uh, movie It's a Wonderful Life. I think Burlington's blessed, and we have a lot of great people here, so, uh, Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year, we'll see you in January.
Since he stole my line, I guess I'll say ditto what this guy said, but, uh, yeah, most definitely Merry Christmas to all, um, have a happy and safe, uh, holidays and a New Years as well, and, uh, um, if we're still alive, we'll see you next year, um, counselor?
Uh, Merry Christmas, uh, my girls are looking forward to it, uh, looking forward to a two week break. Uh, when I come back, the Bears will have their first playoff loss in the last ten years.
No.
So. It will be, uh.
Should be a great meeting.
All right, Mr. Scrooge?
Everybody's feeling good, here comes the downer.
May it ever be Bedford Falls and never be Poggersville.
Well, it's not Poggersville.
That's right.
Um, budget meetings, uh, the Thursdays, we're going to switch to five o'clock instead of three thirty.
So what are you going to, who, that guy?
I will not be here at one of them, because I can't do the, I have another meeting that conflicts at five.
You mentioned, uh, December, or, I'm sorry, January seventeen?
Correct.
I don't know if you all wanted to move that meeting as a Thursday, or, or just have it without, uh, Matt, that will be.
Who's presenting that?
And Dawn.
I'd like his input if we want to move it, but.
I really don't want to miss Dawn.
I like you too, Rhonda.
Um, the only, the, I mean, I don't know what other dates would work, uh, we, we're out at, we don't have a tremendous amount of other Thursdays, you, I, I would prefer if we're going to switch it to another day to be a Tuesday, we both have conflicts on Wednesday.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see.
Can we tape it and then he can view it, I mean, is that a possibility?
Controversial, yeah, yeah, I think we can.
It's kind of a matter of flexibility from, from you all as a group, how you want it.
Let's roll with it, and we'll get hard copies from, uh, from Mr. Rinker, and, uh.
Does that work, Matt?
He's a reader, man, what are you talking about?
Uh, yeah, is it televised, is it something I can just watch?
Yeah, it'll be televised, all else will be recorded.
They're all on the website.
So, Steph has spoken, are we good?
Yeah.
Um, Eric, do you have any update on the payment of the building?
Nothing concrete at this point, he's, uh, his, uh, historic, uh, our consultant was in town and has done his, uh, review, gotten some information to him. Um, he is working with IEDA on, uh, the ability to potentially demolish the building sooner, uh, especially the C and E portion, so they've had some communication on that. I haven't heard any update on that to this point.
IEDA at least did speak of having a, a willingness to consider flexibility dependent on information that they receive from.
Yeah, so once I, once we hear back from IEDA or Doug on confirmation, if they are able to move forward sooner, we'll certainly let you know.
Yeah, you mentioned the police department, uh, you brought on, uh, two new folks in August, they'll, when did they graduate from academy?
Um, they graduated last Friday, they have, uh, two new officers that came back from the academy.
And, uh, we just went through the process of bringing, hiring two more.
I hired two more, Abby Weatherwax, uh, she's coming here from Cedar County, Abby Littles, and, uh, then Nathan Crooks, the son of, uh, Mark.
So they'll be headed to academy in January, so.
Alright.
We are seeing, uh, several new folks come onto the department, and I think you can look at both the police and the fire department, and are you guys both like a third within five, less than five years of experience in that neighborhood? So, it's really a different type of demographic than there used to be within both departments, um, is.
Are you calling them old, Jim?
Them, yes.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah.
They can't hear you in the back, they're old.
Well, they, especially the fire department.
Get him a bullhorn.
Um, I think the only other thing I'd say is, uh, on the fireside, uh, we worked, Stephanie Chief Trexel and I met with, uh, CPAA, whatever that stands for, I don't know what it stands for. What, city township? Ambulance Association. Um, uh, one of the things that we discussed was a potential for change in the allocation formula, uh, that may be working through as we proceed into the next, next couple of years to see it, uh, more of a per capita funding formula as opposed to what we have right now. Right now, it's a reimbursement based off of, uh, it's a complicated formula based off of expenditures, and we need to change how that's done, even if we stay with the existing formula. We'd be wanting them to be looking at a different allocation method that put a higher level of cost on them.
Is it a twenty nineteen thing, or twen, or?
Um, potentially, that would be the payment that they paid next year, would that be based off of the new formula? Uh, the first year of that should be fairly comparable to what the payment would be under the existing agreement, and it would have a, a scheduled increase in the next two years to get it to be a little bit higher. But the nice thing then is a, is a, for everyone, it's a stable amount, as opposed to right now, it has varied tremendously depending on, um, what our ambulance reimbursements have been.
Okay.
That's all I have for, for now, we're in the middle of budgets and.
That's all you have for now, I mean, for now?
Or later.
Just to remind everybody again, this is a, a time of the season where everybody's going to be spending time with family and friends, uh, but just, just be mindful that you probably know somebody that may not have a lot of family or friends over this holiday season, uh, if you know somebody, uh, do something kind, do something kind. It may come back to you when you really, really need it, so. Okay, is there nothing else? Can I get a motion?
Motion, please.
Second.
Move did second. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Yes, please.
Rinker?
Aye.
This means adjourned, good night, thank you.